Let's call this meeting to order with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand. My name is not a god, individual with a legal justice.
You good with everybody in the audience? Everybody knows everybody?
And if everybody can just continue to sign in on the sign-in form that's on the front table. I've got you signed in for the minutes, but for the town hall purposes. And online tonight we have Deb, Jennifer, and Rhonda.
Thank you. Addition or deletion?
So, oops, sorry, just one addition to discuss the town's COVID policy under new business. Is there anything else that?
Are we discussing Mark McChesney's?
Quite honestly, I saw that come out, but I, we could just start it. I don't know if we can.
There's that, so Mark McChesney's request, and I did get another, Jessica and I got another correspondence from somebody in West Paulette about the road that we had started to talk about last week by the gravel pit that's paving.
This, this fall.
So somebody else has reached out concerned about that. So those are, we could also touch upon those.
And did we put the, um, did, I know that I emailed about the, receiving the municipal planning grant.
Yes.
We needed, somewhere in here, we need to decide if we're accepting that.
Okay, so we'll also add.
I mean, I think that's still an old business because we've talked about it before.
Yeah. Mark McChesney's request can be discussed perhaps in new business. And the municipal planning grant can be an old business. And then maybe the roads, that concern, I can just elaborate on maybe during the roads report. I think that's about it.
Approval of minutes from the previous meeting. The one thing that I saw when it talked about the bill from Ferguson, I think the minute said it was totally for wastewater, but that was incorrect, right?
Stormwater.
Stormwater.
Didn't it, I think it was right.
I was very confused on that, so that doesn't surprise me that I.
It did, it is.
So I wrote, um, "Here an inquiry about an invoice from Ferguson which the board confirmed was all for a wastewater project, but that should be stormwater project." And I, it went on to say that the board would like to utilize Arco funding for this project, however seeks confirmation from the planning commission to confirm that this is a suitable use of spending. So that's all still.
That's, that's still true.
Okay, so in the section half of the reports.
I did not see anything else in the minutes. Did anybody else see anything that was?
I'll move to accept the minutes.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post carried.
And I submitted, I, just this morning, I sent out the special minutes from last week. I didn't know.
Oh.
That was kind of, I mean, I didn't know if we necessarily needed that. I did minute since it was a special one meeting. So I.
I think you're absolutely fine.
But I sent it today and I didn't see if it, uh.
Yeah, I didn't really get, I saw that you sent it, but I didn't get a chance to look at them.
So I couldn't, if you want to approve them, maybe next time or.
Did anybody else get a chance to look at them? I mean, it was.
It was like three bullets.
Yeah, it was like, we listened to Eric Hall and Devon, put on the, and that lady.
Yeah, it doesn't look like they got distributed through the regular, like the usual channels.
Oh, so they're supposed to, they need to get distributed through that to be, okay.
Yeah, so I think, if you want, I could put it on you, if it doesn't.
Yeah.
Mess anything up, I can.
I don't see why it's gonna matter. We'll just, we'll just do it at the next meeting, I guess.
Okay.
It does, what you did seemed perfectly fine for what the meeting was all about. It was, it basically just has to acknowledge that, that we were all there in a public forum.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, that's next meeting.
No pre-requested?
Nope.
No announcements?
I don't think so.
Okay. Do we have anything from the zoning administrator?
Yes, um, he left. Looks like he left copies for each of you. If you want to just take one and pass it down, the copies from the DRB, the findings of that, of that, and the letter sent to Mr. Wesco following that.
Well, we got yours, okay.
And then the rest of his report.
This one?
Yeah.
Read that those, those went out, um, last Wednesday via cert by the mail. He will not be here this evening as he has a commission meeting in Castleton tonight. There are only two new permit applications since the last report. One is for a small farm structure and the second is for a sign replacement. And the applicant for that was told that it was not necessary because it was for a replacement, but they insisted on putting an application in just to be. There, so that's all from the zoning administrator's office.
All right, so. That decision is available some probably through any.
Deb sent it out through the email.
All the public.
Channel.
Right.
And I would imagine.
All the normal public avenues.
Posted at the post office.
Yeah, I would imagine it on the website as well on the DRB site.
Good. Plenary commission?
Not at this meeting.
Nothing at this meeting, okay. Road foreman's report. Could you, let's see, you could bring us up to speed a little bit on what's going on?
Yeah, so they, um, Markowski has started the projects in West Paulette for the stormwater. And they have finished Bruce Surjane's project from the DI up in front of his place through to the, uh, the outlet. And since they've moved up, uh, in front of Rhonda's house and they, of course, they hit some ledge. Um, and I, I didn't check the project out today, but they had to move a excavator in with the hammer to chip the ledge out, so. That's as much as I know at this point. But other than that, other than the stone or the rock or the ledge, it's, uh, seems to be going well. They should be able to finish it before the weather turns on them, so.
Is that, is that tube gonna end up in that DI in front of Bruce, that they put in front of Bruce's? No, it's gonna tie into the one in front of the firehouse, old firehouse, shouldn't it?
That's correct, yeah, and then it's gonna go out by the post office.
Right, okay, I, I wasn't thinking about that. So we won't, we won't have to dig up, only New Street is the only road we got to cross? Or do we even have to cross?
Yeah, that road, that's where the ledge is.
Right, along near to, but then that has to cross, this new pipe will have to cross New Street to tie into that in front of the firehouse. But we won't have to dig up 153?
It'll tie in just below Pat's, uh, Kramer's.
Okay. That'll be good. That should alleviate a lot of that water issue up through there. I know it's, it's a phased project. It needs to grow all the way up the road.
And we hated to dig the road up, but with the ledge, we knew that that was gonna be an issue all the way from Hozley's all the way up through, so we just had to pick the shortest route.
Yeah.
Otherwise we'd be pounding rock for 300 feet.
Right, absolutely. Lesser two evils.
Right.
And? Anything else as far as? You've heard from the road crew? As.
Um, nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay. So far they seem to make it through the storms all right. I'm really happy about the product we chose to put on the road.
Yeah, I think it's working great as well.
On the dirt road, it really is huge. It makes a huge difference, so.
Yeah, I know they struggled a little bit with it running through the sanders just because it's so coarse. So they've been mixing a little bit of sand with it just so it flows through the sander a little better. Just binding up a little, just that crushed material is of course. Um, so they've just been mixing enough sand with it to get it to go.
Okay. Julie?
I just, um, had a request today from one of the road crew guys to be added as a authorized purchaser at Tractor Supply because we have a credit line with them. So I was going to plan to call and make sure that all three of them are authorized purchasers with your, you know.
I would say that would make sense because you never know who each one is gonna be. Available to go get what they need. So everybody else. Fine with that?
For this, this meeting, yeah.
So the, um, the question that, I think it was Kristen and I who got an email from someone in West Paulette who was talking about the, and they didn't name the road, but they said it's the road that runs between the two quarries. That's the road we were talking about last time, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, just being concerned that there's a water on one side and not on the other and that the road's gonna give way. So, and I, I, I said that I think that's on, what we talked about last time, that's already on our radar. Is it, are we taking a wait and see sort of attitude toward it? See what it's like in the spring? I mean, we couldn't do anything during the winter.
So what we've done is we, we talked to the, and I don't know where it's all gonna end up, but we talked to the gentleman that's running the quarry that pumped it down. And what's happened is he pumped that down, of course, and he's blasting. And that road is on, a good portion of that road is on fill, uh, which is slate rubble.
Yeah.
And now that he's pumped it out and he's blasting, it's, it's settling down to some degree. So I spoke with him about, uh, starting down in the bottom and just, uh, filling in some lifts to, to hold that bank from sliding down into the quarry a little at a time. So it's settling.
So that's 153, so if the road itself has issues, that's a state road, right? Or no, we do that road?
It's called, it's a state aided highway, but basically we get to do whatever we want. We have to maintain it.
All right.
Um, I, that's, it, he explained it to me a year or two ago when I was asking him about the intersection and stuff like that. And he said, ah, basically we just give you money to maintain it, but it's all I knew.
But we don't maintain 30?
Right.
And we don't maintain 133?
Or 149.
Or 1, okay.
Or 149, because those are state, actual state roads.
Cool.
153 is a state aided, right?
And I believe the town, when the town acquired that land, I believe the town owns out in that quarry. I was looking at the, the, uh, property line and it looks like it could potentially be 100 to 150 feet out into that quarry.
It goes, I think it goes from right up by the, uh, the pump station. And the DI on it went over, and it went up over to encompass the, the land that the old dump was on. And then they had to tweak it a little bit because the dump grew a little bit bigger than we expected before it got closed.
So it's our issue if the quarry owners decide they, they don't want to dump their rubbish there, then we're gonna have to.
So, so I, I can get back to the person and just mention that we've talked to the quarry owner to see if they're able to put some, that fill in there.
We're, we're hoping that we can work in conjunction with it to stabilize it by using their rubbish that's, um, from, from their quarrying operation instead of hauling it up and putting it in a pile to, to build in that area to. And ever since they did that job in 70, it's settled, but it's always settled slowly. So it's never, I've watched it settle a lot, but it's always, gradually over time, it's never like we, we wouldn't anticipate a big, like a big blowout like if it was flinging clay or something like Richard's talking about over.
I remember you mentioning that last time, that it has settled in the past, but it's always done it slowly.
And mostly when they pump the quarry and work the quarry, the blasting and the, the water from holding it, it settles a little bit.
And it's my understanding there is a wall of bedrock, a solid wall of bedrock still between the two quarries. It's just not nearly as wide as the road.
Yeah. There's, there was a wall of bedrock. The road actually twisted and it was a, just wide enough for two traffic and that started to break through. And that's when they, the, I think the state did this job in the, back in the 70s. Around 70 or 70, yeah, it was around 70 when they did it.
Yeah, well, thanks for the clarification. I can, I can pass this information along to the person who asked. Thanks.
We're monitoring it and trying to do some improvements. Anything else? Is there anything from the assessors for this meeting?
Um, yes, uh, just an email that I forwarded along to you all last week before this, it was last Monday, I think, from Karen. Just a heads up for you all regarding, um, the budget for next year from, came, a message that came from Access GIS. Um, just letting the town know that they anticipate no impact. Just letting us know about our one-time fee for $1,800 for the Access GIS data processor. Oh, in the event that they need to redevelop our data processor, there might be a one-time cost of $1,800, so.
But they don't know for sure yet, right?
They don't know if we will have, if the town will need that, but it could be a possibility and should it be, that's what we may want to plan for in the budget.
Well, we already did the budget, so.
Yes, so. Just, you know, something to let prickly in your mind, and if it comes up, you won't be too surprised.
All right, town clerk's memo?
Deb, would you like to give your report or would you like?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, um.
Okay.
I'm trying to.
Other than what's on my memo, I don't really have anything to add. Uh, I did provide everybody with the information with the offices that are expiring in March. And anybody who is looking to generate a petition should be thinking about doing that right now. Uh, there, I also provided each of you with just the breakdown of what the next couple of weeks are gonna look like in the office. We are starting to get feedback and reports from social service providers that want to be on the ballot for appropriation requests. And I think that's it unless anybody has any questions for me.
Um, I have a question, Deb. Is there a particular form we have to get the petitions signed on or can we just like line them up?
We were muted. I'm so sorry. Uh, if you could repeat your question.
Uh, yes, Deb, I have a question for you. Is there a form we have to get our petitions signed on or can we just sign them on a piece of paper?
There is a, there is a form that you need to generate. And I can email you a copy or you can swing by the office and get a copy. You need, uh, if it's for an office, then it would, you would need 1% of the registered voters for, for, I think. Whatever, it's about, it ends up being about 11 or 12 signatures.
If, if you could email that to me, Deb, it would be great. It is the one for the office.
Okay, I will do that. You're welcome. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Deb other than that? All right, thank you very much, Deb.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Tadgers' report.
Okay, I don't have a lot, um, just really the, the warrants. And I will apologize that I submitted a new style last time and did not provide any warning. I feel like I've said before that sometimes in my free time I watch other towns' public meetings and I get ideas. I just was thinking for transparency's sake, it would be nice to, um, when we make motions on warrants, to identify the numbers because all of my warrant are numbered. And then if anyone, um, from the public wanted to see a specific invoice or a specific warrant, um, then they would know which one to ask me for. It would just be a little easier. So just the two warrants, the payroll, um, and the accounts payable. Um, the payroll warrant number 22035 is for $7,9233. Um, the accounts payable warrant number 22036 is for $49,136.53. And that, um, so that translates to general fund monies of $25,255.8. Highway funds, uh, $20,996.84. And wastewater, um, $9,976.94. I will say there are two Markowski, three Markowski bills, um, that were coded for highway that may potentially be, um, argued on later, so.
Right, here. Do you know which Markowski bill was through which portion or?
I, I have not seen them.
Okay.
They're in there and their bills are awesome. Like they give you one sheet with like what the general total is and then they have like five other sheets about what they did and breaking it all down.
It's the way the chief listed them as they've described between stormwater or.
So I think the only ones on this week were, were for the stormwater project. The, um, on, on the last meeting, there were Markowski bills that were from the wastewater, uh, break.
Well, this one we've got 8400. It says wastewater main break.
This must have been down at, uh.
Oh, on this week?
Skid steer.
Okay, maybe one of them will.
Between the bills. Okay.
Okay. I can remember when I put it in. I know there are three bills from them.
Yes.
I know they ran into some rock down, some issues down there as well.
No worries. That's all there is. Okay, so that's all there was. This is the wastewater main break. 336.
336 would have been the, uh, wastewater.
That would, that was that break, right, yeah. It only hit us three hours to hustle that out of out there. That's, they're moving, huh?
Mm-hmm.
I'm lucky around.
I didn't see where the blocks were.
Let's see, was there one more in there? I found those two. On the, on the, on the slip, there was three. It was a step.
There's two that are clipped together that I put in this week and one that I had put in last week.
Yeah, okay.
I think the one that I had put in last week was the wastewater. And the two that I put in just like today or yesterday were, are paper clipped together.
I think I didn't look deep enough to see, what, was it 700 bucks to do that ditch, I think?
There was one that was 722.
I think that was probably just to do that ditch to clean that.
If we can get some property stakes in there, we can put that up for sale as well. And find out what, you know, what we owe on it and we'll sell it.
See, I don't really know that that ditch cleaning was, was anything that we need to bill against the property though. You know, because it was, it was preventative maintenance for, for flood control. It wasn't really a cost incurred by owning that property, so, you know.
Mm-hmm.
But the one thing we need to do before we do that is we need to talk to, have a legal contract drawn up so that we will have the, uh, an easement to go in and maintain that.
And most importantly, find out where the property lines are.
So we may need to hire somebody to put property lines, stakes out probably. Frank?
Yeah, you, you might be able to just have to do is.
Ask this man.
Put it out for bid, whatever, okay? Particularly if you're gonna be retaining a diesel. Then lawyers, if you're closing, throw that in an easement at that time.
Okay. We'll talk to our lawyer before we put it out to make sure that everything's in order.
We definitely have to know the, where the property lines are, just so people, folks know what they're buying, you know, and what they can and can't do with the property.
So there's no pins in that property?
Not that I've, that I've seen. And Keith has been all over that property as well. He was there when they did the ditch and he didn't, I don't know if he's on tonight or not. Is Keith on?
Keith is here. He's going in.
Maybe he can speak to that. I, um, I don't believe he spotted any property lines. But we had, we did have that conversation when he was down there.
Ask him if he could message us and tell us if he knows if there are any property lines.
Did you hear that, Keith?
I didn't hear you. Um, all I know is that we're gonna dug the ditch and, uh, so Emerson Sanos Frost says we are in the ditch, we are on her property. She owns the entire ditch. So, um, she had some concern over what we were doing there and I explained what was going on and she, uh, you know, she accepted it. But if the center of the ditch is not the property line, she owns the front, the backside of the ditch.
So that ditch belongs with her? Okay.
The entire ditch belongs with Hillstone Lee.
All right, thank you, Keith. But then we, it still leaves the rest, the, the rest of the property kinda vague.
Yeah, and if we're gonna sell it, I mean, again, folks are gonna need to know what they're buying.
I wonder if, if we could get Timmy to come down and, and put the stakes out. I mean, we're, we're gonna have to. It, it would, you're right, there's no way you can sell something that's not surveyed, so people, you know, tell them something that they're gonna fight over, that doesn't make any sense.
They can't do anything with potentially, you know, they don't know.
Why?
Yes?
Why?
Yes.
That would be a justifiable expense.
Right.
To have them do the passing property.
Okay.
To get a survey.
Right, okay. So probably, Tim Chamleski, do you think that would be a good choice, Keith, or do you know of anybody else, or?
I think Tim is fine, yeah.
I don't know if anybody knows him or.
Yeah, I can reach out to him.
You had the only, I know of him, but I don't really know him, but I've heard he's, he was pretty reasonable and, and fair. Okay. So, like, before we get carried away here, how do we feel about the, the warrants? It's still okay to make a, a one motion to pay the two warrants, right? Just as long as we, or do you want a motion for each warrant?
I think it's fine. I just want them each identified.
Okay.
This is the one for the, the water main break.
So does anybody wanna have any questions about the warrants? I didn't see anything on there that didn't seem out of reach, so. Let me, I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the payroll warrant of $7,092.33. And accounts payable warrant of $49,136.53.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any more discussion about the mo, the warrants? All in favor? All right.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Carried. Let's bring that back. Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Julie? Great, thank you. Emergency management.
So Bob shared that at the request of Vermont Emergency Management and FEMA, a tour of ten culverts was accomplished on November fifteenth. Two participants from Vermont Emergency Management and two from FEMA's Massachusetts location were taken to visit all ten of the culverts.
And that's all. How far was her?
Um, and Jennifer shared that there was a report of a dog bite today, um, which she addressed, the offending dog is up to date on their rabies. And so as per the protocol, the owner will contain the dog for ten days and no further action.
Wastewater?
Hmm, there was an email. Um, so Jill had emailed, uh, providing the wastewater treatment facility DMR submission files for November of twenty-twenty-one and the VTMS updates since November fifteenth of twenty-one. They are now trying to recruit an intern from Castleton to fill the weekend hours. In addition, the heater in the office slash lab is dysfunctional again and awaiting parts and repair by Irving. Future priorities, uh, how to proceed with potential sledgeholding upgrades, may have SRF funds available for new legislation. Jill sent most recent VTRWA with VLCT training on this coming up on this Thursday, eleven, or it must be twelve-nine. Um, upcoming projects to schedule a replacement of repair of air valve near the end of Forest Main from Spruce Gum Pump Station with Mike McDougall. Still waiting for the pump to arrive, expected replacement around Thanksgiving week. Um, A1 on task to replace pump one in the Spruce Gum Pump Station. All twenty-twenty-one jetting is complete, will return in July of twenty-twenty-two to get the last few sections of the system along Thirty, Main Street and Nelson Terrace and Egg Street. And install of the new hose bib faucets and most are broken slash leaking on inside and outside of the facility. Will do this over the winter on the inside faucets. As always, please let me know if you have any questions. It's from Jill.
So the heater is fixed, I got a message yesterday. It was the motherboard on the heater thirteen hundred bucks. And they knocked two hundred and fifty off 'cause it, 'cause they took so long. It's new electronic stuff, they feel that probably there was a lightning strike. This is what he felt.
Sounds like an insurance claim.
Yeah.
She said. That was on the eighteenth. He trouble shot it, motherboard blew. Yeah. And the, and the consolidated communications finally did replace the modem. So, that's.
That one we did get for free. I mean, they, they tried to charge us three hundred and sixty dollars, but, but I called them.
How good. Frank?
Remember those lightning bolts that were black, violent, is that, that would knock that thing out if it was possible?
Yeah.
That's insurance, lightning.
Is it, is it, I don't know what the deductible is or anything like that, if it's.
I don't know, but I can, um, look into the starting a clean.
You'd have to have the Irving people.
Uh, yeah, I don't have the invoice to send, but I can contact somebody.
Okay, so that's that for that. All right. Anybody else have any questions about wastewater or not? I started to get a conversation where they were about to sludge in that project, but then I never got time to revisit it. I'm trying to figure out if, if the amount of money it would cost to, to, if they feel that it would, the money to, to do a sludge type E, convert one of those to hold sludge, would pay off in the end with, with, uh, which less fees from hauling sludge, if that would balance out so that the user fee would go down because of it.
Looks like there might be some funding coming through, um,
Yeah, I've heard the same thing.
So there, it might be, it might be as such that the municipalities or wastewater treatment facilities specifically might be able to receive funding that we could put towards the project, so it wouldn't have to come out of pocket.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we can use ARCA funds for that, for upgrades, but there might be other funds that are coming down the pipe. Which what I heard at the last sort of ARCA-related meeting I went to, they were saying, you know, there are other state and federal funds coming down the pipe both for storm water and for wastewater. And so we probably wanna wait at least through the spring and see what,
See what, see what appears.
see what's gonna come available, so we can leverage our money the best way we can.
Okay. And I'm sure that Jill, Jill is, is involved in, in watching all that and, and our engineers.
Yeah, I'm sure she's on, yeah.
So. Uh, it would be great if we could come up with some way to do some upgrades that, that wouldn't end up tacking money onto the user fee that would drive the user fee down, so. So she said if we, if we were able to do a better job with our sludge, we would haul less, so that would be, I mean, it's a dollar something gallon or something, I don't know.
They're trying to haul a lot of this to have a
That's the problem, we haul it, like, we need to haul condensed. And it would also break down, she felt too, so. Frank?
I think this is federal funding, because they're talking about upgrading plants all across the country and this may, this is a program.
Right, we'll, we'll follow that and see where it leads us. Hopefully, we can, we can see it as a, a pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. And that's it for wastewater?
I think so.
Okay. Older unfinished to town green. We have, uh, one more letter from Monica. You wanna read that, Monica?
Oh, the whole letter? Well, and we will read the letter. It was, it was the same, I just printed it out, Monica had requested that it be printed, it's the same, that everything that was
Oh, so it's the one that D. you sent us through, okay.
You got it already, but we have to read it out loud, but.
Well, I, I can read, um, uh, first of all, point number one, the testing monument on Route thirty is evident by the lack of awareness of the public. There, uh, I mean, there are a hundred and forty-seven signatures on that petition now. And ninety percent did not know about this monument because it's not visible. It's not a fast road and there's no parking. The odd-shaped stone monument is flat, does not generate interest and is not pleasing to the eye. So no one stops and cannot stop to view it. So originally, we're going to use that in a town green, but per few words on that plaque, we didn't use it because it was specific to that area. So that started the whole monument, let's get a new monument on the green. And the fact is, there is real incentive to advocate it forward. Yes, men fought, men die, they fought for cause, their family, community and land. An idea of freedom and independence unencumbered by outside orders that did not use a true world. Books and articles which I listed for the select, select board was submitted. Paul it should be proud. The Heron Rangers have fought here, originated here, and generations of herons build here. I can appreciate the anti-gun sentiment, but that's carrying a bit too far. It's not just denying a significant element in our collective history, it's trying to throw it away. People should understand the art of differentiation, that history is not black and white or bad and good, but rather change the frame. So there are three letters of support which are, which I submitted from our state legislators, the Office of Historic Preservation in the state of Vermont. The DAR, Daughters of American Revolution, and the SAR, Sons of American Revolution, will support with approval of our select board for this project. And they all state the importance of having work of art established with a flag of our history placed traditionally on the green for visibility, accessibility, for the community to know the larger history of all. And we're right on trend, because there is a statewide movement to recognize the importance of village green as a central part of the community and to enhance the appearance of those greens. It's called the Vermont Village Greens Initiative, and there are grants to be tapped under that initiative. So we're trending in the right direction by enhancing our faith, making it a centered community. The project will be funded by grants and donation. There were three grants submitted, SAR is a fourth source of money on Fourth Boulevard, the select board. A private donation of five thousand is forthcoming, will be approved from the select board. The fundraising will be over a two, three-year period, and there are other grants to be explored. Costs of this project will further escalate and the delay of decision by the select board is fair. As there is inflation who's driving up costs for material and labor. Now, I submitted a hundred and thirty-seven signatures, so I'm wondering now, should there be a submission of signatures more than the signatures submitted who are for this project? Can we agree on a monument? I'm asking the select board, can we agree there should be a monument? Um, and should it be on the green? Dorothy Offensend said, "Paul it's story has behold elsewhere and will be published in the near future," I hope. P.S. at the end of her book, pages from my Paul it's grantbook, speaking to Alton Ellis, who is a historic board, a historic board at the time. Though we plan to be here for the two-hundred-fiftieth Paul it's celebration in the year two thousand and eleven, I'm sure that we'll be skeptical we'll make the two-hundred-fifty national celebration in twenty-twenty-six. And that's where I ought to be, have a monument on the green in twenty-twenty-six to celebrate our positive history. And I did get a note from the sculptor, Jeff Hartman, he would love to have the select board visit his gallery. Um, he's a well-known artist, he works in bronze, and he does beautiful detailed work. Now, I've been back and forth with him and also a reenactment, um, uh, from the Mullenford, uh, historic board, Mike Faberi, and he's given me so much, um, a photograph drawing of what the Continental Army, the Mountain Boys, look like. Because they do reenactments in Fort Brackon, we're open. So I have some beautiful rendering and the rendering that the dimension drawing that you can see is a rough sketch. But Jeff Hartman knows his stuff and he does beautiful artwork in detail. And he's the artist and, um, he would take a look on the green and see where it should be placed in an artist's point of view. Um, I spoke to an old man on River Road, who's neighbor of Dorothy Offensend. And she said, you know, lots, we have long conversations, that's the beautiful thing about going door to door to get people's opinions. She said, you know, there are some people who would like to keep things as they are. And, but we have to move forward and we have to celebrate our history. And, um, she said, yes, this, this should be done, you should have a monument on the green to commemorate our history. It would make the town richer, it would enhance the beauty of the town green, and it would be a focal point. To put it elsewhere, um, we have to learn from history. It didn't work hiding up on Route thirty, it didn't work for people. So let's learn from it and put it in a place where it will be noted and appreciated and treasured, keep it down. That's all I have to say.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for Monica?
I don't have a question for Monica, but I do have an additional piece of information. I know that, um, at either the last meeting or the one and four, someone had brought up the issue of our, um, liability insurance with VLCT. So I took the liberty of contacting them and they said that, um, a monument would be covered in this, that is on town-owned property would be covered in the same way that all of our other town-owned buildings are covered. So the liability insurance already exists. If there was a monument and we wanted to insure the monument itself, we'd have to put, we'd have to write that down in our insurance, basically.
As a, as a writer, further, any damage that may be incurred.
Exactly, yep.
I'd like to make sure we put it, chuck it somewhere else, you know? Um, where there are no people, at least here you have a protective area for it, for the park. So, you know, there would be less chance of damage or anything. You know, with the light on here at night and whatever. But that's something to consider too.
Martin?
Uh, I checked with my own insurance agent who covers, uh, a number of different towns, uh, municipalities. And I told him about the monument and he said, first off, a work of art is one of the lowest-priced riders that would go on for a policy. Uh, simply because the chances of it being, uh, damaged are far less than buildings or any other structures. But he said, in a case of a municipality like this, the chances of it even being an additional cost to the policy that we already have is not very likely. And if the company were to put some kind of a rider on it, he, he said, a hundred thousand dollars of insurance on a monument like this would cost seventy-five dollars. And this is far less than a hundred thousand dollars. The company that he was quoting for is Travelers, I don't know who covers the insurance.
The Vermont League of Cities in town, so Jessica has that.
Okay, but the likelihood is that, you know, the rates are very comparable.
It, it didn't sound like they were saying it would cost us extra, we just have to write down that it exists.
Well, everything, everything that you add on to your policy has a dollar value and it's a percentage goes toward it. That's how they, they add everything together and then you pay a percentage of that, I believe is how it all kind of worked, all the properties and stuff were phrased and. So, is there a reason that, I, I'm not really familiar with, why, did you approach the Historical Society with this monument? Or did you wanna come directly to the select board or?
I originally approached the Historical Society about the monument, uh, over on Route thirty. That's how that started. And I said, oh my gosh, this is fabulous history. And we sat down, we had a meeting, and most of the people on the historic board didn't even know about it. Um, Martha Shoneman knew about it, she said, well, let's go look. And we looked and we said, oh my gosh, that's terrific history. And so that's when we said, oh, let's move it, and then Judy Cooley said, well, there's a And then Judy Cooley said, "There's a, there's a phrase in there that is specific to that area, so it'll say where it is." So I approached the Historic Board to start this project. Where do we put the monument? What do we want of the monument? Let me work with you, let's work together. And I did get Mike Faberi for the Ice Dream Social to give us history. And then we were going to meet again, and I was told, "Stay away from them." So that's where I am. It's unfortunate, I don't know why they would want to work on something like this. There has, there has the Historical Society. You would think that they'd be interested in developing some kind of plan over time. But I was supposed to be on a Zoom meeting with them to discuss it, and I was told, and I got told five minutes before the Zoom, "We don't want you all meeting right now." I've written to them numerous times, I've called them many times, but I was kind of stuck and pushed away. I don't know why. That's my story there.
So a lot of the, a lot of the grants that I saw were matching grants. So that means that they'll pay a portion of the money you get, and then you have to match it. So, so basically, you're saying you're looking at like $30,000 to do this monument, and you'll have to raise, like, most of them are halfway matched from, from what I could see?
No, mine and mine cost more. I just checked with Jeff Hartman, his price isn't enough. His price is going to be around $36,000 now for the monument, and I'm still waiting for RNG Stone. But I think the base, when we spoke earlier, a year and a half ago, would be about $2,800, and the plaque, $3,800. And the foundation's setting about $1,200. So we'll see where they are then. I will ask them also if they can donate some of this because they do do statues. They've done numerous statues in West Brooklyn. Not all of these grants are matching the grant. The DAR is a terrific grant to have, and the SAR.
So how much do you think you'll have to raise by donation to? A real solid number. Do you feel that you, you could get with grants? And then how much do you really anticipate raising from donation to, to make this job come together?
Well, I think that we already have $5,000 progress from the, even voting, Pollock Board approval. And that could be a matching, and with another $5,000, I can get up to $10,000 from the DAR. Sons of American Revolution, I don't know because they need a board approval before they kick in. That Wyndham Foundation, they give a range between $5,000 and $10,000. Denkes, the Art Council, combination grants up to 15 maximum, given over a period of time. And then there's the new art, the, and I gave you a link to that, the Vermont Village Greens Initiative, which has quite a few grants in there to act with.
You're, so do you think you need, that you'd have to raise half of that money from donations to, to match? You think you could probably get half of it?
Over two and a half, two and a half, three-year time, I think I could get quite a, quite a bit of grant money. Over two or three years, it's, it's quite a bit. Yeah, the sculptor, the first phase, he needs $7,500 to do his clay model and a casting of an eight to 20-inch bronze. That's the first casting, and that would be about $7,500. So I think we can get that right started, walk that, and, and the rest of the money would be incremental.
My understanding is that some of these grants have deadlines that are coming up soon, and that Monica would really like to get an answer, like yes or no, from the Select Board as soon as possible so she can make her plans.
So some of the questions that concern me is, is the town, if the town applies for these grants, then if the, the money isn't raised, then we would be obligated to come up with the money if for some reason the money wasn't raised?
Yeah, no, why would that be?
Because if the town applies to the grants and, and we accept the grants, and then for some reason the money isn't raised, then somehow we have, we're going to be obligated to, to come up with the balance that wasn't raised for the, for the matching portion of the grants. That's one of the things that concerns me from the Select Board standpoint.
I, I'm thinking that we would work it in a step process. As the sculptor, you know, makes his first study in bronze, I think that's very doable. And then he has, it'll take him two and a half years to finalize his sculpture. It's not going to take RNG that long. But over that period of time, I'm confident that we can get there.
So we have a question. So, so what happens if you don't? And for some unknown reason, and there's a $10,000 balance due at the end of this thing? What, what happens then?
I, I think I think that.
That'd be something to get writing.
Yeah.
You know, just, I mean, that's something you would need to know.
Um, yeah.
Because that's a possibility. I'm not saying that that is going to happen, but it.
Well, there's always a possibility that the sculpture could pass away. I mean, John Sosinski, who is the owner of RNG's, no, did pass away last year. And he was very much involved in historic markers. His son now, David, has taken over, has taken over, and a grandson, Wyatt. So I kept them in the loop and going forward on this, but there's.
So are they expecting money upfront?
On RNG Stone?
Yeah. That would be the last part of it.
Well, yes, that would be the last part of the project. The, the actual sculpture would be first.
I think, I think we just, we just don't want the town to be left holding the bag in the empty zone, so just want to clear that up.
What type of reassurances would you be looking for? If you can be specific in what you're looking for in assurances, we'll address them.
I was under the understanding that what Monica was asking us for was for a letter of support.
Yes.
Not to actually write the grants ourselves. Is that correct?
But the town has to apply for the grants.
Are, I mean, are all the town, are all the grants municipality grants? Or are some of them just?
Some are municipality, like the Vermont Arts Council. The Wyndham is a 501(c)(3). The DAR is a 501(c)(3). So that's, that's what my, you know, trying to work with the Historic Board because they're 501(c)(3), and that is important. If I have to, I'll make my own 501(c)(3) to do those grants.
Okay, Judy?
Well, I, a few things. I want to, I want to respond to the Historical Society's resistance to get involved with another monument. I mean, we've, we've been here for three meetings. Rose, unfortunately, isn't here tonight. But it's, we don't need another monument. There's already a monument over at North Pollitt. And that is our big thing. There already is a monument in addition to a monument here and another one up street. The monument here says Veterans of All Wars. We, we're not going to, we just are not going to, are not going to support this. And, and I think Monica, I believe the last meeting, when I asked all of you to give a, give us an idea as to how you felt, and you said you were waiting to find out about the funding, and she's back here again tonight, still not able to tell you definitely what this is going to cost and how it's going to be paid for. I just, I think it's time to put this to rest. If you're going to go with it, fine, but let's not drag it on any longer.
I, I think you need to know that this would be a letter of support from the Select Board, a letter of support to put a monument on the ground. As long as I have that letter, I can apply to the DAR and all of those other grants.
This is just a comment as a citizen of not affiliated with my role. But I do, I'm a young person that lives in town. I appreciate history, and I appreciate art, and I respect interests that everybody have. And I think, you know, something new and exciting is wonderful. I just personally think that it's an interesting stance if the organization within town that has up until this time had a lot of responsibility in doing a lot of the historical presence in town isn't supportive of this. I just wonder, the Town Board, I, I just think that that's something to consider, that the Historical Society doesn't support this. I think it would be interesting to absolutely, you know, bring more attention to this and maybe spend money, that $30,000, to update the parking at the Historical Society because I, for one, would love to go to the Historical Society and see more and read more and, you know, learn more about the entire history of my community. I just think it's something that should be considered, and I'm not, you know, I'm kind of like what Jessica said at the last meeting. I'm really quite neutral about the whole thing. I just do think it's something that's to be considered, that the Historical Society, who I feel, you know, kind of this falls obviously within that umbrella, doesn't support this. And I just think that's an interesting, and an important factor. That's, that's.
Julie?
So I was just, I agree with Judy that I think that this should be put to bed tonight. It's dragged on long enough. But I have a few key reasons that I think that this should be denied, and one of which is this isn't going to be at least a $50,000 monument, which would be twice fixing of the stairs to the library, which literally holds within the town our history and access to all of the public to getting that history, which we cannot be bothered with. But we can be bothered with doubling that to put a monument up seems silly. And I also argue that the current monument doesn't work because of its location. The current monument doesn't work because of human nature. People like to bury their head in the sand and not think about the past. Putting a monument here may be flashy for five days, and in five years, no one will care. And that will be money down the drain. I'm not done. The current state of affairs in this country would argue strongly against putting a monument up, specifically a monument to a person, a military person. We're literally ripping down monuments of people that are founding fathers that were revered in this country because history does not reflect kindly on them. Can you guarantee that history will reflect kindly on the person that is being memorialized on that green? That vandalism won't occur? That there won't be demands for it to be ripped down? And at whose cost? Because no grant will be written for us to remove the monument. No grant will be written for us to clean up a mess if it's vandalized. That will be on us. And finally, to the point of insurance. This board very recently opted to remove the word "safe" from our equity statement due to liability concerns. That word would have cost us $0 on our insurance rider, zero. The chance of that ever biting us in the butt was nil. But you are conscientious and concerned about the liability that this town would face. A physical structure that will be seven foot tall on a green that is literally utilized weekly for children to play on should be a liability concern for you. And if it is not, but the word "safe" in an equity statement is, that is a profoundly disturbing thing. Thank you.
Just one more thing, and we have to bring this to a head. So you can have a closing statement, please.
So I have to ask you, if 147 people in the town support this monument, and I only have to sit here, a few voices, how does that balance out? Where is the 150 who oppose it? I, if you're, if we're a democracy here, and you're a Select Board that makes decisions on what the people want, then there's no question of what, how you should vote. Otherwise, what's the point? I, I, there has to be a response because there are few who are angry about them. I respect how they feel, but there are 147.
Frank?
Yes?
This is, I've had my handkerchief for quite some time.
Sorry, Dad.
I do agree that a decision needs to be made. I, I appreciate the research that has been done on, by all parties with regard to this statue. To my way of thinking, we're talking about a little teeny tiny piece of green that, yes, is used by children. In fact, it was used this past weekend. And for a period of time, there's a book walk up for, for people to enjoy going from one place to the other. There are over 1,100 registered voters in this town. That needs to be taken into consideration as well. There are other people in the history of our town. A few years ago, if we're talking about wars and soldiers, our town was directly involved, Bob Jones might remember this, was directly involved with bringing a soldier home from the Herklin Forest in Germany. And he, his remains were brought back to the United States, and he was given a proper burial in Bramville, but he was a West Pollitt resident. So there are many, many worthy people, events that could be memorialized by way of a statue, a monument, a plaque, many ways to do it. But we do not have Gettysburg here. We don't have a big, large green space to honor the number of people and events that truly need to be honored. You could get signatures from many people on just about any topic. There are historical events that have occurred in Pollitt. The creator of the Calliope came from Pollitt. So there's, there's lots of rich history in our little community. We could all stand up and talk about our favorite piece of history in this community. But I don't think it's fair to either try the yays or the nays to drive this out any further. And, and if it's a nay, to lead Monica on to keep doing research about getting money. And if it's a yay, then let's just pooper it off the pot because we do need to get this decided upon. That's just my two cents. I appreciate everything that everybody has said, but there's a lot more to consider. Other people's opinions to be considered, including the hundred and some odd that signed the petition. But there's other people who may not even know that this is being considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rhonda Sanders.
Rhonda?
Hi, thanks so much. I just wanted to clarify the points about the Historical Society's decision, which is, is notated and was shared during the previous meeting. But we have focused our objections primarily on, one, the location on the town green, which I think has been well discussed, but also based on an argument that encompassing all of that history in one statue is not an effective way to share a community's history. And as Rose Smith shared at the last meeting, and I believe Jessica in a letter to the Select Board outlined a list of, of activities that we're discussing and planning that will engage people in this moment in history and, as Deb said, many other moments in history in Polat in a more interactive and substantive way. Thanks.
Anybody else have anything to say? Anybody on the Select Board want to make a comment on this? John?
I'm not in favor of this project. I think the history of Polat's important. But I think these days, there was a rush of monument building around the turn of the nineteen hundreds and with World War II. That was, World War I, that was supposed to be the world war to end all wars. And people had hope. And it's been obviously squandered. I think putting military, monuments of military people is, should be considered for non-military builders. I think we need more teachers. I think, how is our world done with military people on every one of our greens? How about having some non, if, if every green of every town the size of Polat across the world had a teacher on their green? Had a artist, had somebody else than just military. I'm not saying the military doesn't deserve it, but I think it's, it needs to be shared. And I think Polat can put itself on the map by not having one and having someone that people can look up to and express an interest and find out why they're on the green. They all know what it looks like for the military at the Battle of Lexington and Concord. And the same people that'll support that will not support what happened on January 6th. And that drives me crazy. Because we came this close of losing it. And as more documents are showing. But I think that those days are over. I think we need to look for other people to commemorate. Putting up monuments change. The Memorial Auditorium in Burlington was put up because they didn't want statues of doughboys. They wanted a participatory area. There's a whole book on it. I've read it. And, I'm still talking, please.
Please.
They wanted more participatory instead of just the classic military figures. I think we, we do our veterans well. I almost wore a hat today that said USS Underhill. It was named after a relative of mine who lost his life in the Battle of the Coral Sea and had a ship named after him that was later sunk by a kamikaze submarine. There is a monument for him at the school in my former town. But I think society's gotta look at who they want to commemorate and how we can get out of this morass that we're in. It's not just COVID, but it's a whole society. So I'll be voting no. I think there's other things that we can celebrate, we can commemorate. And there's been talk about numbers, a hundred and forty-seven. We aren't a referendum state. We aren't California or Colorado, where everything's done or many things are done by just petitions, with sometimes very little discussion other than TV ads. There's been talk of this will put Polat on the map. Well, some people don't want Polat. I got more land than anybody in Polat and I'm not looking to put Polat on the map. Or the, as the elephant doesn't get excited about when the price of ivory goes up. So I think, I think there are other places that we can use this money to commemorate people with a greater positive effect than to commemorate an encampment.
Thank you. Anybody else on the board have?
I just have a question. And both Julie and John, you mentioned that we can use this money elsewhere. Is that true?
No, I'm not saying, I wasn't trying to say that this is a pot of money that exists before us that we can use. My point was to spend fifty thousand dollars on a statue when we've been kicking the can down the road for four years on steps to the library that were gonna cost half of that is bothersome. That, that building, one, is historical.
Could we use the money for that?
There's no money.
There isn't, there isn't a pot of money that we have. These are grants for a specific thing. That, we, these grants don't have to be spent here. And I'm not saying that we're getting this money and we need to spend it. I'm just saying, it's kind of a slap in the face to the people that care about access to a building that one houses our history, is historical in and of itself, and houses, quite frankly, the future for some people in this community who don't have access to computers and internet and use that for their day-to-day lives. They use it to get jobs. They use it to get their mail. They use it to live a fulfilling life.
What about the folks that the statue could be important to, or is important to? What about those folks? This town's very inclusive, correct?
Sure it is. I'm sure there are, I'm sure there are people in this town that care about this. But we are a representational democracy. We elect people to make decisions for us. We don't take petitions and that's the word, that's the final word. You are the deciders.
So does any, just one second.
Just to, just to say, so I think everybody, there's been ample opportunity for comment. We have spent forty minutes on this topic. That's just tonight. And there's a couple of things on the agenda that we all wanted to add that are very important and I feel that we, we spend a lot of time on things that are also important. But then the end of the meeting comes and we don't get to talk about things like the town's COVID policy, which needs addressing, so.
Do you have anything that you'd like to weigh in on this? Jessica, one way or the other?
No.
Okay. Bob, do you have anything you'd like to?
I think I said my piece last week.
Okay. Do you have anything more to weigh in from a personal opinion? Okay. Does anybody want to, on this board, want to make a motion to support Monica's fund drive and go after grants to, to erect this monument and statue on the green?
So I would make that motion if we were guaranteed or we knew that it wasn't gonna cost the town anything in the end. I don't know how, how that's gonna be shaped, but, or what that's gonna look like.
No, I'm not asking for the, for money from the town. This is totally through grants and donations. That's what the town's on the list when they sign the grant, petition. It states on there, grant donation over two, three-year period.
I'll make that motion.
A, a letter of support, is that the correct term?
The wording would be a letter of support to put a monument on the Green.
Is there a second on that motion? Well, hearing no second on that motion, then the motion is dead. No one even seconded his motion, so we can't even vote on it, so.
Somebody needs to make a motion to deny it.
No, just the motion.
Your, your motion for support was not backed, so it doesn't go to the next stage to vote on. So the, the Select Board is not in favor of, of supporting the monument on the Green?
But may I make a suggestion quickly?
What's that?
Can we put it on the February, March list of, how do you call it? Referendum? Can we put it on there and, and so we'll hear from the public, how they, and, and I think that would be very fair.
I don't know exactly all the details of, of what we would have to do to do that, but I think you could talk to Deb and find that out. I think it would require a number of signatures, et cetera, to, to put it, the wording and to put it on the ballot. But I think you'd have to talk to the town clerk to find that out.
May I say something to that?
Yes.
Would this be a question, yes or no question for the voters? Or would this be a non-binding opinion type question? And also, the Select Board also has authority over accepting or not accepting petitions to be on the ballot. But it would need to be decided if this is a binding or a non-binding question. And it would require thirty percent signatures of the registered voters.
And the, whether or not it's binding or non-binding would be the decision of the Select Board?
Well, it's how it's worded. Is it gonna be a yes, no? Is it gonna be a yes, we do want it on the Green? Or a no, we do not want this monument on the Green? Or is it an opinion poll? Would, so it, it, it would have to be worded as such to reflect what the ultimate result would be.
Whether, was it, okay.
Like, yes. If it's voted on and the, and, and it is the majority, yes, is it a yes? It depends on how it's worded, on what the outcome is. Is it a yes, that yes, we're gonna move forward? And you guys need to worry about the matching grant money. Monica is in charge. I think there also needs to be a decision on what the role of the grant writer is. Monica's obviously not a town official, but she is going to be representing the town on municipal grants. So, yeah, anybody can submit a petition for inclusion onto a ballot. One percent for candidates to be on the ballot, one percent? Or thirty, I think it's thirty percent to be an article on the ballot. So more signatures would need to be garnered for that than if you were running for an office.
Oh, I mean, exactly. I think, can we, we have to move on. I'm so sorry.
So, so that's something that you'll have to work with Deb and, and come up with, Monica.
Can I just make one more comment?
We really need to move back.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but there's so much more on the agenda tonight and we've already given this now about almost forty, forty, forty-five minutes. And there's, and I think that that's more than anybody's given and more than we'll be able to spend. And I'm sorry to be the bad cop, but I really, it's eight, it's eight thirty here.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you for your time.
Now, the COVID policy. We haven't yet adopted a COVID policy for, for our town employees and how we're gonna handle it and stuff like that.
I've got a question. Well, I don't know if we need to go into executive session or not, but I did get some news today. I don't know if you did or not.
I think, I don't think we should talk about any individual if we don't go into executive session.
Right.
So I think we need to talk about the policy as a, as a whole and then, and then go to.
Executive session.
Then go to executive session and discuss the, the fine points of, of what's going, of how it may affect us. So, this, I've done a little bit of research and tried to share a little bit of what I found. So I, I guess what we need to do is decide how we're gonna handle an instance should someone, should someone come up with the fact that they may be exposed to COVID or one of our workers either have close contact or test positive. Can we just adopt the, the guidelines from the Health Department or, I guess is?
I think that makes sense. That, I mean, none of us are doctors.
Right. Or lawyers to, to draft it.
Right, because it gets a little bit dicey.
Right.
I mean, that's pretty gray water.
And I think that the state, just if I may, the state, I mean, they have spent all their time and they've got medical professionals and doctors and they have a pretty well thought out. It is ever, seemingly ever evolving, but it, as this entire pandemic is. That's not a criticism. But I do feel like the state has pretty robust, just a robust outline of this policy.
And pretty much if we, if we, any, any type of circumstances that we need to evaluate, we would be able to go to the Health Department and, and come up and follow them back to how, how it should be handled and stuff like that.
Yeah, and looking, sorry, and looking at the, at the Health Department's, the link that you sent out.
Uh huh.
It pretty much breaks it down by like what kind of, like if they had a close contact or if they tested positive, you know, it, it does break it down by, and whether they were vaccinated or not. And it breaks it down by all of that stuff, which seems to make sense and is, is more than, is more than I know, right? So I'm, I'm glad they break it down like that.
Rich?
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that the employees of the town should get a copy of that just so they know protocol and what an actual exposure is, whether it's fifteen minutes or five minutes or ten minutes next to somebody that tested positive or, you know, whatever the case is, they need to know what protocol is.
Frank?
One of the dicey things about managing COVID from a business or administrative point of view when it comes to employees is you have HIPAA, which is very strict on privacy and things like this. And so you might wanna be a little light as opposed to heavy because you don't want to get into being a problem there.
Yeah, thank you. So, can we feel that, that we'll just follow the, the Vermont Department of Health protocol for COVID situations? Is, is that, right? Do you know any more from any of your sources than, than just the email you sent?
I don't know, like I don't know what other towns have done. I know, just.
just, I mean, it's sort of relying on self-reporting, which can be an issue, but I, I mean, there's different protocols for people that are vaccinated and unvaccinated, and it's all sort of listed on the Department of Health website. But I think that you should have a policy that just states something, not just like we follow the Department of Health guidelines, but like a policy that states anyone who is a known contact to a COVID positive should report to their supervisor and we will request that they either mask or quarantine according to current Vermont Department of Health policy. Because if you aren't a little bit firm, it's like not having anything at all.
Okay, so we, yeah, so, so we could take, we could take those bits and pieces from, from the Vermont and, and put them in and say, all right, so if any of our employees fit this criteria, you must do this. And that's, those are all the, the guidelines from the health department. Okay. But we can't just say, yeah, we're following that.
Well, I mean, I think you can say that you're following the Department of Health's guidelines, but I think that you need to specifically say if an employee is a known contact to a positive COVID, they must report and then will follow current guidelines. So you don't have to fill in the current guidelines, because otherwise you'll have to change your policy every five minutes. But the reporting is key so that you can move forward with the guidelines.
Do you think it should also say that they should report if they had a positive test? I mean, I'd assume that they should, but that if they were close contact or had a positive test, they should report to their supervisor? And then will follow the guidelines?
Yeah.
Frank?
That could be HIPAA.
Okay, we're, we're not talking about HIPAA right now. There's no names.
It's not that we can't ask people.
No, there's no, it's not what you said.
No, it's Vermont, we're going by that, don't.
If you talk to the league and city and towns and get consultant advice, because they could tell you exactly what to do, it's boilerplate. Probably other towns are saying it.
Okay, Frank, we got it.
Take the league and city and towns advice.
Isn't that who Julie talked to?
Yeah, Julie did, Julie did. Excuse me. You got some information from us from that. But right now we have, so we know what we gotta, we know what, how we need to address it. We just have to have something to to go in from, from now on. We need, we need to adopt a start tonight and have it.
One other thing, Mike, wasn't, wasn't there also a question about like while the person is quarantining, do they use their sick days or do we pay them?
Right.
That was, that was also something that we might want to address in the policy.
There was, last year, there was a federal act that was in place that was part of the CARES, I believe it was some component of the CARES Act, whereas if you, if there was an employee that felt they may have contracted COVID or been exposed and were going to stay home and isolate, part of this CARES Act was that the employer was to pay that employee for the duration of time that it took for them to isolate and get tested, but that has expired. So there's no obligation.
You don't have to, you could.
The town could, but there is no obligation to do that at this point in time, but.
Okay, so how do we, how do we accomplish what we need to accomplish tonight? Do we just?
We just pick somebody and spearhead it and put it in black and white.
Right.
To write a policy.
But we also need to come up with some moving forward. Right now we have a need to have decisions made for tomorrow, so.
I think that the state, if I may, the state guidelines and the State Department of Health and even on a federal level has been like, that's universal for everybody. I think that the fact that the town is needing to adopt a policy is important. However, the policy already exists.
Well, then we need to have it in black and white so we all know.
No, I know, but it is already in black and white on the Vermont Department of Health website. I, I could be, I don't think I'm wrong. I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward, I believe, right now on the Vermont Department of Health website.
There's a whole bunch of different options you can put on.
There are a lot of options depending on what.
Employees don't have that in front of them, though.
I know, I'm just saying that it does already exist. So in terms of it, I don't know the decision that you have to make tomorrow, but it does already exist in terms of this guidance. Like currently, right now, if you suspect you've been exposed to COVID, you need to quarant, you need to isolate, you need to get tested. You need to wait till you get your test results back. And then if you test positive, the first, starting the first day after your test result, that's a ten, you isolate for ten days.
So we need a policy that we can hand every one of our guys, so when they are exposed or they do test positive, they can look at it and read and see what they should and shouldn't do.
Right.
Because now it's, I mean, it's a disaster now because nobody knows what to do.
Well, everybody knows what to do, it's whether or not they want to do it.
Well, I don't, I don't think they do know what to do. Is it seven days, is it fourteen days? You know, these are the questions that we're getting from these guys. Is it six feet, is it five feet, was it fifteen minutes, was it five minutes?
Right.
You know, it's just, it's all over the board.
Right, right.
And if they could just look at a policy and say, okay, I was within six feet of somebody for fifteen minutes that tested positive. Now you, you know, you've been exposed, do this, 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 and this.
Right, 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 yeah.
So maybe we could start by just, we could do this and then we could hand it out. Okay, so what to do if you're in close contact with someone with COVID-19? So that's kind of the,
That's a.
That's the one we're looking at.
When someone tests positive for COVID-19, it's important to notify their close contacts to help keep COVID spreading. Close contact means within six feet for a total of fifteen minutes or more over a twenty-four hour period of someone with COVID-19 during their infectious period. The infectious period is defined.
This is Jennifer. I'm just wondering what your thoughts are about maybe discussing this further with me and Bob? Come up with something?
I think Jennifer.
Not just us, but can I have input?
That's, that's a great idea. We have to decide, we have to have something in place tonight. But it's certainly going to be a developing policy, I feel, that, that we may have to tune to some point. And now, there's another one that says what to do if you test positive for COVID-19.
Hand all that stuff up to the guys. All the town employees.
For that. And then waiting for tests. So we could, we could copy all three of these links and hand them out and then, then we would, then everybody that knows what's going on would know how to handle it. And the only thing that we would have left to do is is to determine how we want to handle it from a business standpoint.
So, Mike, I've just, I've been trying to just real quick write down something that kind of encapsulates what Julie said and what we're trying to pull together, so that maybe we can have just a short policy tonight. So this, town of Pollitt, employees who test positive for COVID-19 or who are a close contact of a person who has tested positive must report to their supervisor and follow the guidelines on the Vermont Department of Health website. Is that basically it?
I think that's, that's enough to
We have the.
To make it clear.
And then we could hand out those documents. Those are from the Vermont Department of Health website, right?
This is all the stuff I printed off. I tried to share most of it with everybody.
As of, as of the date, and you got to specify because it's ever-changing on a day-to-day basis.
And that one there I got, that's waiting for test results.
But we could make sure that like every, every other week, we could give them updated ones. You know, like we could just print it out every other week and make sure they have the updated one.
Now, Jessica, with the ARPA funds, isn't there a fund for paying these guys if they are out due to COVID?
The, we can pay them hazard pay and we can address the, we can address the the cost of the pandemic. So it is, it is likely that we could use the funds for this purpose to
If they miss time.
Pay people to quarantine. Yeah, I can double check, I, that seems like a no-brainer, that that should be part of it. But I can double check, but I think it may.
And that would have to be in our policy as well, or should be spelled out.
Yeah. Well, not necessarily that we use the ARPA funds, but that we would pay them to quarantine.
Right.
During the time, during the time that it says they have to do it, basically, according to the Department of Health. Okay, I'm going to add that I'm going to ask about paying people who are quarantined. I know that I said this in my email to Mike, but I think that, I think that paying someone while they have to stay home based on the health guidelines is a really good idea, based on what the VLCT people said, which is that it'll lead people to be honest about if they were exposed. Because if I was exposed and then I had to miss work and then I didn't get paid, next time I was exposed, I might just not tell anyone, right? And then I might infect someone, so.
But if I wanted two weeks off with pay, yay!
Well, you can require proof of positive and negative tests.
Yeah.
I think that's how it would, but.
Right.
I have any bright ideas, Robert?
Yeah, I was supposed to say that.
I was thinking a couple of months.
It's not two weeks anymore, isn't it like seven days and take another test or something? It's, it's, yeah.
It's ten, according to that.
It's ten or seven with a test.
Yeah, exactly. And who wouldn't do seven with a test? I mean, the test is at Walgreens. It takes, you drive through and you stick the thing up your own nose and it doesn't even hurt like it did last year when they stuck it up your nose. And they tell you within twenty-four hours. It's great.
And there's no shame. There's no shame. I feel like there's become so much like, you know, oh, it's, the whole process is super overwhelming and it's always changing and it's stressful. And so I think that you're right in finding ways to not make it stressful, not make there be any sort of like finger pointing, shaming.
No gray areas.
No gray areas, just very straightforward and.
Frank?
Yeah, to simplify on what Jessica's has laid out, as you say, just we're, the town of Pollitt is supporting the Vermont Health Department's guidelines for COVID-19. And an employee will have to report to their supervisor in order to get reimbursed for the time, paid for the time that they're in quarantine.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So in order for us to accomplish what we need to accomplish, I, I think I'd like to go into executive session after this, after, at the end of this meeting and, and for, to discuss some employee
Employee labor relations.
Yes. So, but for now, I guess we could, we could say that, that that's going to be our, our stance is that if, if you have close contact or if you meet any of the criteria for close contact, what to do if you're close contact. That's, that's one if you got a big close contact. And this is if you're waiting for the testing.
So, the next step is somebody's got to get all seen in black and white, just like a step by step.
We could, Jennifer, I can reach out to you and Bob and ask if, you know, for, before the next meeting, you might be able to have a, a policy that the board might be able to consider. If you want to fill in, we're still in the meeting, so if you could, can I have a conversation? Thank you.
And that public comment will be in a couple minutes, as we get through the public, this COVID thing. Before we go into our executive session, we'll do public comment.
Do you want to have a look at any of these?
I'm done.
Okay, John already has these.
Most of that, you want to keep these? I'll copy to this, this stuff here I found online.
So do we need to actually adopt in a policy tonight, or do we just need to make our sense that we're going to follow this?
I guess we do. Well, we have to have some direction.
We need to make some decisions tonight as a board.
So I guess we have to, we have to, we have to, we have to say that we're going to, that our policy is, is to follow the, if you, if you're, if you're in close contact or if you have tested positive for COVID, we, we require you to follow the Vermont State Health Department guidelines. I think that will get what we need tonight. What do you, Julie?
I was just going to say, you can adopt that language that Jessica had and change it at the next meeting if Jennifer comes in.
And then we can, then we can continually improve it and tune it, so.
Do we want to put anything in it about, about them getting paid or not? Do we not want to put that in there? For tonight?
I think that, uh,
I think we're going to have to.
Yeah, I.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to decide, do we want to pay them to the, if they test positive for COVID? Do we pay them while they're, while they're waiting for their test? And do we pay them if they're out with COVID? So there's, there's two, there's two things. If they feel like they need to be tested, do they, when they go to get tested and wait, well, you said the.
It depends on the kind of test you get. You can get one that you get the, it back within a couple hours. Like I went on a Sunday, like at ten o'clock, and I had it by one P.M., so.
But there's also some tests that may take a day or so.
Some take a day or two, yeah.
So.
Also don't have to quarantine if you are vaccinated.
If you get tested, you, you still have to quarantine until.
If you are a known contact and you are vaccinated, you can mask and go about your life while waiting for your test results. The only reason you would have to quarantine while waiting for your test results is if you weren't.
If you're not vaccinated, right.
Does it spell, is that spelled out?
Yeah, it's spelled out on the Vermont Department of Health website.
Right. If you are unvaccinated, if you are vaccinated, if you are fully vaccinated, if you've had COVID, or if you've unvaccinated and recovered, if you are vaccinated and have symptoms.
So, we're going to have to make a motion to adopt these until, until we.
To follow these guidelines and, and we need to know about how, how they will be paid. So do we, we do that in two separate, two separate steps, right?
We could do it, we could do it all in one if we know what we want to do.
Right.
Do you want to discuss, go into executive session, executive session and then determine your stance?
It might, it might be the easiest way. Harley?
Does the Vermont Department of Health guidelines state anything about the type of test? Because you mentioned the really quick test, which I've heard is not as good as the twenty-four hour test. So I don't know if your policy needs to mention the kind of test or.
It just says, it just says tests from all the stuff I read on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we may, it, it probably would be better for us if we, if we have our executive session and discuss it.
I do have something else that's non-related that
Okay.
was, was old business.
Let's finish the meeting, go into executive session and.
And then finish this, okay.
And then finish this. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. So.
So one other thing for old business, so I finally, I'm so sorry, it was two failed attempts of getting the Development Review Board and the Planning Commission vacancy. I had sent the email twice.
I saw that email now.
And I realized yesterday that I'm like, I don't know, I never received confirmation. So it's out now. And I sent that email, which you all probably saw, Deb, thank you for distributing that. And Deb was wondering if he would like for it to go to the papers.
Previously, we have.
So, if, if, so, yeah, I just wanted to check and see.
Would it be all right with everyone if I copy pasted it and put it on Front Porch Forum?
I don't see any problem with that.
I mean, a lot of people are on there, okay. I mean, a lot of people are on there, okay. And I'll just put exactly what Deb put.
I might just change, or it's fine. It just says you could contact the select words assistant, so that is neat.
And I can put your email in there if it's not in there.
Yeah, email's in there. I was just gonna say, I didn't know if my, may need it to be there, but, yeah. Okay.
Is there anything else under older unfinished business?
Oh, we didn't do the, are we gonna accept the municipal planning grant?
Oh, for the?
Yeah, the, um, so we were.
Rail trail?
Yeah, no, this is not the rail trail one. We haven't heard, they're, they're deciding on this Friday. So this, December is the month to hear, but this is the municipal planning grant which we applied for.
For the Dutchies?
The Dutchies, yeah, to figure out what to do with the Dutchies lot and also just to do a general West Pollet Village master plan. The idea would be that we would contract with someone to do that master plan. It would probably be Rutland Regional Planning Commission. They would do some, um, public engagement with folks in West Pollet to talk about what the vision is for what people need in the town center, basically, in, in the village center, in that lot, and also in the other, in the, in the other areas surrounding it. And would put together, um, a master plan. It would be a lot like what's happening with that scoping study for the roads, except this would be for like West Pollet Village and its economic development and also, um, housing, to talk about housing. Um, it was a grant for, I don't have the exact number in front of me, it was right around twenty-three thousand total. The match that we had was two thousand one hundred fifty, and I think we did put that in our budget for next year. If we just, if we want to accept this grant, then I just have to go on the website and I have to hit accept and then we, um, go ahead with Rutland Regional Planning Commission to move forward in this process. I suggest that we accept it as, you know, it's great that we got this.
We can get it and, and rejuvenate that.
Yeah, and we did get back, as you saw, I emailed to everyone, we did get back the Brownfield study and they, they, they identified three potential problem aspects and, and we have to decide with Rutland Regional if we want to go forward and do like a stage two study or if we don't need to do that. So I'll talk to them about that, but.
I meant to read that and I think it, it kind of slipped through and I didn't end up.
The only things they really identified were that it was by a railroad, so there might be, um, there might be coal from the railroad that's stuck in there. There's also a couple like lumps. They don't know what's in these lumps that are just there on that property. It could be old slate piles.
I think it was, I honestly think it may have been some dirt that was left over from the, from the sewer project that just never got smoothed out.
So anyhow.
Or when they did the excavation, when the store burned.
Yeah, so there's those lumps and they don't know what those are. So that's a potential hazard, right? But it, it doesn't sound like it's anything really, really dramatic.
Well, that's good.
So.
So, does somebody want to make a motion that we accept that grant or?
No.
I mean, we, 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 we applied for it in the first place, but sure, I'll, I'll move that we accept this grant.
Bob's on with it too, so.
Okay, one of us moves, one of us seconds.
All in favor of the municipal planning grant in conjunction with Rutland Regional?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
All right, great. I will get on that.
Last question about the, is there, is the Planning Commission vacancy, does that term have an expiration?
I do not know.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to, I knew the DRBs.
It does, but I don't know when.
Find, okay. I couldn't find that.
Twenty twenty-three.
Okay, then what, oh, then maybe, then Deb, do not send the one out. I need to make sure that it's, I'm not sure the DRB maybe didn't say what that vacancy was, if there was a time. Thank you, Harley.
So is there any more new business or older unfinished business?
No.
Okay. Public comment. Monica, you have something you wanted to?
Yes, I, I do, because it's so unfortunate to see that politics has entered into your decision. Um, and, you know, it's unfortunate to know that, that you don't know your history, that these people were not militiamen, they were actual farmers who left their farms and family and friends to fight for a cause. And it's really unfortunate that, that you seem to have no appreciation of your own town history and what happened here. Because that's the basis of who we are. It's not all this other politics going on, is teaching your children what's happened here.
Okay, but maybe it's not a hunk of brass stuck on the lawn either, so. Thank you for your opinion.
Uh, pardon?
I said, yes, your point is made, but my feeling is everything that you said doesn't really be reflected by a hunk of brass stuck out on the lawn either, so. It's, it's much more deeper than that. Thank you. All right, so we have a, um, anything else? Move to go into executive session?
I'm going to go into executive session.
Okay.
To discuss employee relations.